Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting for August 10th, 2021. Our first order of business will please join me for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Bob, agenda review?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I'll move the agenda blank here.
Second.
You got a motion in a second for the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. First order of business here this morning is to hear from our veteran service officer, Michael. Good morning.
Morning, Mike.
Morning, Michael.
Morning, Mike.
Glad I get to be easy early looking. I think last time I was after Ryan, so. So, good morning.
Are you saying we should put Ryan at the end every time?
Yeah, yeah, keep him here as long as possible. I know he loves being downtown. Before I use the resolution for the state operational enhancement grant program, this is a grant program we've entered into, I think, every year in its existence. We've done it every year since I've been here since 2016. The grant dollars are for about $12,500. Those funds are used in a variety of ways. It can be used in a variety of ways. It definitely is an enhancement grant, so the state gives us a lot of flexibility to kind of use those funds throughout the years to help with office technology, with continuing education as laws and policies change, so our staff can be abreast with the current benefits and then what's going on for our vets in the community. We've also used it too in the past. You may have heard on the radio this year, we had some advertisement going on there. It was us, Fairville County, Wasika. That was part of those state dollars to get the word out there. Coming out of COVID, it was nice to have an opportunity to remind folks that we exist and we're here to help and things have changed and to contact us. I really kind of did see just a flow with office traffic coming back in after the restrictions opening up on COVID and that messaging. I think it was good timing. So, in the future, upcoming year, the grant cycle actually goes from July 1st through June 30th of 2022. So, with this resolution, it will actually be backdated as far as expenditures to the first. We have time, 60 days into the calendar year. But we'll be using it for similar purposes, outreach, improvement capabilities, anything we can do for laptops and being able to get back out in the nursing homes, back in homes of people who can't come in and get us. And then with the federal law changes that are coming up here this year and already starting this year, to make sure we understand how to get folks in access and touch those benefits. So, we've used the grant dollars, all of them, every year since I've been here. Like I said, we haven't sent any money back. If they're not expended at the end of the grant cycle for the allowed purposes, then you have to refund the state that money. But we've been fortunate enough to find good use for it in the community and for our constituents. So, I would recommend approval this year, and that will give me the go-ahead to enter into that grant with the state.
Moved, approved.
Seconded.
Got a motion in a second. Discussion, questions, comments?
This is something that, you know, it helps our veterans across the county and actually across the southern Minnesota area because as many of us know that different veterans come to different officers. They don't all, they're not all coming just from Blue Earth County, but they're coming from La Sua, Niklet, Wasika, you know, a lot of different counties are coming in. Anytime we can help our veterans, being at anything even from a billboard to a, you know, the iPads or something. It's just a positive thing, and I appreciate you putting in for the grant.
Sure. And on that, with our license center being open during the pandemic and kind of leading the charge in that, we've had a lot of veterans come from other counties just to access that license center. And so, when they needed documentation to get that veteran identification on their driver's license, part of the credentialing we got to have access to pull from different counties, different states, their records came from that state. It was nice to have our license center folks upstairs kind of leading the way for surrounding counties, and it also brought us some extra business. And we were able to help folks from other counties that just happen to be using our license center, so.
And you guys' commercial is really good. I like the fact that you had a couple other counties, and it's just, it's a very well-done commercial. Good job.
Great job.
Comments? Seeing none, I got a motion in a second for the operational enhancement grant. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Mr. Chair, before my place, at Niko, he did a presentation on how they're trying to get federal funds. Mike doesn't like to do this, but could you just talk a little bit about that and where it is right now?
Sure. So, the grant before us is state funding for county veteran service officers. Since we work predominantly in the federal world, we operate federal systems, we're helping essentially veterans or former federal employees. Currently, counties that fill this capacity, which is in about 36 states, some states don't do it at the county level. They have state reps that cover like three counties and regions, like Missouri has them, Utah, Wyoming. The federal government provides no funding or assistance to keep us trained in their systems, even though they refer people to our offices to access their benefits. And one example I give is for healthcare enrollment in the federal VA system. Veterans from all over will go to the federal clinic in town here and then get sent to a county office to get help enrolling and applying for federal benefits. And there's no funding source or support from the federal government. So, the Commitment to Veteran Support and Outreach, conveniently acronym CBSO Act, is before Congress again this session, it was introduced last session, it's in the House and the Senate, and it would do a pilot program to essentially enhance that relationship between counties and federal governments via the state in there. So, we're all kind of force multipliers and working together and trying to make those counties that don't necessarily have adequate funding. That's not the case with us. I appreciate the resources and services we have, but there's disparity from county to county, state to state that you go in. So, Representative Levin out of California is the author on that, and then the Senate, Senator Tenon Walden of Wisconsin. So, pipe butters and support, and hopefully we can get it through this session.
That's exciting.
Mike's been the lead on this nationally, so.
Thank you for that.
Really appreciate that.
Yeah, because I think the service we get in Blue Earth County or the service I think, I like to think we offer, it should be the same whether you're in Mississippi or North Carolina, when you're talking to veterans that serve their country and are coming home to their community and looking for assistance. So, there should be, I think, a standard there. So, I think we have it.
Good.
Thank you.
We agree with you, Michael.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. All right. Next thing on our agenda is some audit adjustments with Lisa.
Good morning, Lisa.
Morning, Lisa.
This is one of my favorite times to come visit you all because it means that the audit is complete, and our comprehensive annual financial report is on our website, available to be viewed. So, this is something that we go through every year, just some cleanup items. In front of you, we first have operating transfers. These are the actual transfers amounts between funds. Transfers allow the county to allocate financial resources to the funds that actually receive the benefit from services provided by another fund. Some of these major transfers include, we, the general fund gets transfers in from the landfill for the county oversight of the landfill. That includes some staff from environmental services, or I guess you call it property environmental resources now. I'm still getting used to that. And also some finance staff of the time that we took, we do the receipts for the landfill once a week when they bring them in. They, because they do not have access to our finance system, and then also the time that we spend on the audit. So, we do that at the end of each year. Public Works gets transfers in from the general fund for an abatement program that has been set up a long time ago for Victory Drive, and I believe that's almost coming to an end here. We did that for quite a few years. And then Public Works also gets some transfers in from the building and capital fund to cover some of their capital expenditures. And most of these are, you know, budgeted, but it is required that the board approves these actual operating transfer amounts. So, that's the first item that we have.
Okay. We have a motion to accept the operating transfers for 2020.
Seconded.
Mark and Colleen, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have our budget adjustments. So, the board approves the budget, you know, in the December, the year before, each year. And then during the year, because the circumstances do change with the actual amounts, we do budget adjustments. We've summarized these budget adjustments into the three different areas. The revenue and expenditures are the two that I'll start with. So, the major changes in the revenue that you can see on the attached is the Public Works. We did a reduction of revenue by $13 million. Ryan and I had talked about this at the end of 2020 because there was a delay in the Cassad One turnback. So, the revenue was not received yet. And then on the expenditure side, you can see that Public Works had a reduction kind of to offset that of expenditures of $11 million for that same project. And the reason why the revenue is $2 million more is because we actually get turnback funds before we do the project. And so, obviously, there was some expenditures that we're going to be into the next year. So, those are kind of the major changes in revenue and expenditure budget.
Okay. Got a motion to accept the revenue expenditure budget?
Seconded.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for the revenue and expenditure budget for 2020.
And the last item is to change, or the changes in the other financing sources and uses which were budgeted. Here you can see that the major changes there are the, the building and capital use, which means we were going to forward some funds for the ditch advances that we've earmarked, where we're internally funding the ditches, but we just didn't have the projects to internally fund those. So, that was reduced by $2 million. And then you can see on the other side of it, the ditches actually receiving that money was reduced by the same $2 million because they just did not have the projects, you know, probably due to COVID, again, delay in projects. So, those are the major changes that were in that area.
Thank you, Lisa. Got a motion for the other financing sources. Got a first, you have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, instead of $4 million in the budget for ditches, we now have, we had put $2 million in. That's what you're saying?
We were, what we do when there's a ditch project, instead of bonding for it and spending like $70,000 to $100,000 in like administrative financing, because the county has fund balance, we internally fund those. And the building and capital fund covers that, so we actually transfer the funds from the building and capital. So, it's just kind of like a transfer.
So, we're using reserves for all intents and purposes?
Yes, yes.
Thanks.
And we just didn't need to do that this year.
I just wanted to be clear. Thanks.
Other questions? Okay. Hearing none, I got a motion in a second for the financing, other financing sources adjustments. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
And you heard the nice thing about the license center too. Mike?
Oh, yes.
Ryan?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I have a relatively short action items agenda, but a lot of information. So, I'll start by passing out our first action item, which is consideration of bids for state aid project 007610. Which is our county-state highway seven bridge replacement over the Maple River, just a couple miles south of Mapleton. This project is one, as you may recall, this bridge has been on the shelf since 2012, and it hasn't been eligible for funding replacement. It became eligible a few years ago and has been sitting on the state bridge replacement list, waiting for funding. Finally received that. However, the bridge plans were outdated because of the spec change years. We've talked about that. So, we got those updated, finally worked through all the kinks, got it out to bid, and we're pushing the end of the season now, of course. And we were fortunate in the regard that with our bids, we do have some contractor appetite out there. So, our engineer's estimate was $829,055. And as you can see, our low bidder is Minwa Construction, total bid amount $743,330.32, which is 10.34% underestimated. You can see we got three good bids and four higher bids. The last one or two, I would just say they were probably just throwing a number at it just to see if they got to work and make some profit, considerable profit on it. So, a pretty broad spectrum. Our, our engineer's estimate is right about where we usually like to see it, which is in the middle of the pack of bids. So, with that being said, I would recommend award of the bid to Minwa Construction with the caveat that the schedule for the bridge replacement right now is to be determined. We had targeted getting the bridge replaced and at least returning the road to gravel over the winter. We won't leave the road, the bridge out over the course of the winter. So, we're working with the contractor, but the steel piling is an issue right now, material availability. But I would recommend award to Minwa Construction at the bid amount. I have provided you with the project bid abstract with all the EJW prices and bidders prices for your information.
So moved, seconded.
Got a first and a second for the bridge replacement. Any discussion?
I, Ryan, I sent you a thing. I just sent it, actually. It's on bridges and it's using fiber reinforced alloy with.
Within the concrete?
Within the concrete.
Yeah, fiber reinforced.
You probably know all about it. I hadn't heard about it, so that might be something that they might want to look at.
Yeah, sometimes we've actually had some of our bridge that we're looking for, can't get reinforcements, getting the fiber reinforcement. But yeah, I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting. I got it from FH, Federal Highway. Thanks.
Okay. Other comments? Seeing none, I got a motion in a second for the Cassad Seven Bridge. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
All right. Information items, project updates. County-state highway 27, the reconstruction from Minnesota Highway 14 to Cassad Two. The pavement began, is actually beginning today, starting on the north end of county-state highway two, and we're expected for that work to take about three weeks. So, as we start getting into all the COVID impacts and material availability, asphalt cement is another one right now that's a problem, which is obviously the tar that binds the Batumis pavement together. And the shortage on that is actually truck drivers.
Right, the drivers, not the material.
Right.
Surprise, surprise.
So, we're seeing impacts on that. We're anticipating the work will take approximately three weeks to complete. Should be faster, but again, because of those AC delays, we're struggling with getting adequate materials to feed the project. Mathwitz will resume the shouldering and final shaping work after the pavement's been completed. It's certainly great signs. He is ready, pavement's starting to go down. So, personally, I wish they would have started at the south end, but I have a little bit of a bias to where I live.
I wouldn't disagree.
But they wanted to get the south end, was actually reclaimed for that little piece there, and it is in stronger condition. They wanted to get that covered. That was holding up the traffic better than the north end. They want to get that covered, so.
So, end of September probably, by the time they stripe it and shoulders?
Yeah, it will certainly be end of fall still with the project. Knock on wood, should be pushing up against November, snowflakes flying, which is always our goal is to have them done before that. The guys like to have the projects done before on dig season, before we're here on digs, so that's kind of our goal. County-state highway 27 in Eagle Lake, Dirt Merchant Inc. is working on the sewer and water on phase two, which is between Thomas Drive and Linda Drive. The curb has been poured on phase one, which is the piece from Linda to Cassad 17, and they're going to be back this week and next doing sidewalk and driveway, so that'll be coming together pretty quickly. Good to see that. And I think the residents out there are sort of tired of construction already. Those urban reconstructors taxing projects because of all the utilities that are out there and how many times they have to dig the road up, but they're moving forward pretty well.
The crew's, the crew's doing a good job out there. My dad lives on that street, and they've been very accommodating to all the neighbors out there. As far as I know, they, they come out and they want to go somewhere. They're moving signs. They're letting the people know that they're going to be in and out of there. So, Debut's crew is doing a great job.
I agree with that. I think they're doing a really nice job. Work will begin on phase three at the end of this month, which is the piece from Cassad 17 to 55, or 17 up to, I think it's Mulray in the city. I'm sorry, I get the city names. The city street name sometimes mixed up. The Cassad 57, North Riverfront Drive, roundabouts at US Highway 14, that project is moving along. Sign installations are underway this week. The final lift of Batumis pavement and the striping is scheduled for next week again. The AC, asphalt cement availability may bite us a day or two, but we're hoping not. We are still targeting and hoping to open the road by August 20th, so that'd be the end of next week.
You see, the light poles in?
So, we got all but four light poles, and what we did was, the city of Mankato, actually, because we're within city limits, we spec the same light poles as what the city has in their stock. And so, the city had just received a shipment of like 27 light poles, and I think we were able to grab 23 of those. And we left out two or three poles that were at less than critical locations.
Sure.
And the contractor did a nice job of laying that out so that he could put up those remaining light poles that are kind of at the farthest reaches away from the roundabouts, so he could put those up with just the lane closure and not have to have a full traffic closure when they come in. So, yeah, that worked out very well that there was stock available.
So, it will be open?
August 20.
August 20.
That's our target, yep.
They'll be a lot of happy people.
Yeah. Well, I understand there's a few business places that are already having some sort of celebrations and.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I mean, just, just sales on different things and stuff like that, just because of the opening of the street. Shut off from the world. Yeah, yeah, but nope, they're going to be very happy that that's open.
Victory Drive, which is your county-state highway 82 from Stadium to Hoffman Road. The concrete pavement is underway, and that'll be the primary focus over the next two weeks. After that's completed, Dirt Merchant will be back in to do some of the final grading, turf establishment, sign, striping, work of that nature to put the project back together. The issue we have on that project, again, is another materials availability due to manufacturing and just general materials. The signal poles, so the traffic lights, are delayed for quite a while. They're delayed up until probably October. We certainly understand we can't, don't want to leave the road closed just for that. So, right now, we're planning to put in a three-way stop condition. It's, we understand it's far less than ideal, but it would at least get the road open, get traffic moving through there, and then we should be able to put the signal lights up with just lane closures and some flagmen and not have to have another full blown closure is what we're tentatively planning.
Actually, I drive that a lot, and I go on both sides. I do stadium and, anyway, it hasn't been bad.
Hoffman?
Yeah, Hoffman.
Oh, yeah.
It hasn't been bad at all, surprisingly. I mean, you see a little bit of backup when people are going onto Glenwood. Coming off Glenwood, going onto Hoffman, but it hasn't. I mean.
It's good to hear.
Everything's ripped up by me, so I live on the topic, Warren, yeah. But it has, personally, it hasn't been bad.
Did you hear that circle?
Yeah, yeah, it hasn't.
So yeah, we know the three-way will be certainly delays during peak times, but it'll at least enable us to get the road open. We didn't look at temporary signals, but I think with the three-sided configuration, they won't work properly. They're very expensive to utilize, so a three-way stop will be an interim measure that we're going to have to employ.
Well, it really helped good that that pole road took over so much of the traffic.
Yeah.
You know, basically, the folks going in the same grid didn't really have much of a extension to their drive to go to the university or in that campus area, you know, so.
Well, and the other nice thing is the campus hasn't been up and running for all intents and purposes. They're starting to come back now.
Kasaw one from nine to 90, that project is kicking off and underway. The tree clearing is near completion, so it's starting to look drastically different. Mathwitz is also working on the south end of the project near Kasaw nine. We are going to be closing Kasaw nine intersection with one later this week. I think the press release that was just released stated Thursday, and that'll be closed for approximately three weeks to complete the realignment work of that intersection. The soil mill walls are also scheduled to begin in the next week or two. Those will be the primary work objectives for the retaining wall work. So we're excited. That's a very specialized construction type. The crew that's doing it is actually out of Colorado.
Really?
Their main office, but they're kind of travel nationwide and specialize in that type of construction. So they're the same crew that did the wall and slope stabilization up by Mini Oak Park off of our Kasaw 69 for the railroad, so. Bridge replacements, the Kasaw seven bridge we've talked about. We are updating plans for the county state highway 40 and County Road 151 bridges. Again, same thing, outdated specs, and we'll evaluate when those are ready, what optimal bidding cycle is, the County Road 169. Bridge plans already completed, ready to go, but given some of the material questionable nature right now, I don't know if we see benefit in bidding those projects if we begin construction. We would still like to start 151 and do, we will own the stormwater line going out, and then we would have, we're still kind of feeling that out of what that threshold would be for us to cost participate in future repairs or cleaning or things like that. It would be based on how much water each into that pond. So respectively, we put a pretty small share in compared to the school site and what that will generate, but at least gives them some surety that we're going to be there to help them in the future to pay for the benefit that we do receive. And we would have that cost with our own ponds.
This just makes a lot of sense to me. I mean, this is awesome that you're getting that put together, because you're right.
So they've been great to work with. That's been, it's been a good project. There's been challenges, just all the coordination that has to happen because of the number of players between the county, the city, the school district, and then all of the respective consultant staff that are doing the design work. But it's gone pretty well. And then again, the sidewalk to the north as well will be part of our project, so they're moving along on that. The city was going to be responsible for any easements that we need for the sidewalk constructions. I hope that goes. A sidewalk in front yard is always a touchy subject. That's something we did put in the city's lab to work on, knowing the landowners. Kasaw 10 and 72 in Vernon Center. So this is a project that's been in our capital plan that was actually supposed to have been done a couple of years ago. And as you may recall, the city was delayed in getting the projected USDA funding to really help with the lion's share of their project. They did receive that, they're moving forward in design and intend to reconstruct Kasaw 10 and Kasaw 72, three blocks of Kasaw 72 in Vernon Center next year. So they're just beginning design on that and working through that. We did have a meeting with the city and then a subsequent meeting actually with the city and some of the landowners along the stretch of Kasaw 72 that's Main Street. So as Mayor may not recall, the county state highway 72 actually does a loop in town, and it goes on Main Street east for two blocks, east of highway 22 for two blocks, goes south a block on East Street, and then goes back west of highway 22 for two blocks on Kendall Street. Kendall Street was reconstructed in 2015, so the piece of East Street and the block of East Street, the two blocks of Main Street are Kasaw 72. The two blocks of Main Street are incredibly wide pavement right now. They're like 53 or 54 feet wide, which is a huge section that puts the sidewalk all the way up almost to the doorsteps of the buildings. So when we did meet with the city, we talked about the fact that achieving ADA compliance with that wide of a road is nearly impossible because you don't have any play to adjust your grades and make things handicap accessible, which is a requirement for us. If we're going to build these projects and we're going to put in sidewalk, it has to be compliant. So we did agree on a theoretical, and we subsequently met with the businesses out there, and Commissioner Matt was there as well. I appreciate your attendance and the support at that meeting. And with that, we came to a determination that the block, the westernmost block, which is in front of the lumberyard, would be built to a 44-foot wide section, so it'd be a 12-foot driving lane and 10-foot parking, and that would facilitate the lumberyard's operations because they basically park the semis in the middle of the road and unload them with a forklift there. And then the eastern block would be built at 40-foot wide. So I think we achieved pretty good consensus at that meeting, and then we're able to answer a lot of project-related questions. We'll be seeing some more finalized design as I get more information on that. I'll bring it forward to the board. I think some of the project open house meetings may have already happened. There may be subsequent. I'll let you know if they do have those. Again, we'll be running most of that project through the city's consulting engineer because our project is really a smaller fraction of the total project that they're going to be doing. And given our workload, it made more sense just to let them do these because of the utility work, et cetera.
You put up a, you know, signs on the road that no parking if there's a semi parked in the...
That's one of the things we talked about, actually, at that meeting, was developing some no parking zones or unloading zones only.
Yeah.
Maybe they could utilize that shoulder space or unloading one side of the truck cabin, come around and unload the other, and we'll actually do a thickened walk or basically a driveway pavement between the building along the frontage of their building, so they'd have continuous concrete to better meet their needs. And we understand that's a very important business to that community.
Absolutely important.
All right. Two more. Kasaw 11 from 20 to 68. We're working on plat development and finalizing design on the east end, which connects to Minnesota Highway 68. We're going to be having second round meetings with the east end landowners to discuss the revised design. We were able to, we had to kind of make a swing to connect into highway 68 to bring it into more of a perpendicular. It was at a really oblique skew previously, and it really forced site distances and cars were coming up highway 68 at really high rates of speed. But with that said, we got into people's yards more than they liked, and so we were able to review the design and tweak it and try to compress it and compromise. So we want to meet with them and show them the compromised design. We're still going to have impacts to them, but we were able to pretty significantly reduce it. I think we were able to move it over to almost 75 feet, which is, I think at this point, probably about as good as we're going to be able to get it. So the next step is to get that finalized so we can finalize the plans and get Jack by right of way. That job, because it's a long project and a lot of landowners to meet with. Briefly, Kasaw six, study from Kasaw 20 to Lily Lake subdivision in Lake Crystal. I've had a few conversations with Mindot regarding methods of constructing a trail between the bridge pier and the slope paving that comes down. We went round and round on it. In the end, they decided they really don't want us to disturb and get anywhere near the piling for the bridge. So we did talk about possibly filling up, and we're going to look at if we could fill on top of this little paving and actually raise the grade of the trail up. And then the city will have to look at the cost and make a decision on, do we want it to run along the road? Do we want to pinch the road and limit the width for vehicular and agricultural traffic, which is going to be a significant consideration? With that, any questions on any of the projects?
No questions?
Nope.
I don't have any. Thank you, Ryan.
Keep moving on. Then the maintenance activity updates. The first round of maintenance striping has been completed. Crews will be back in mid-September for the next round, and they'll be mobilizing two to three times into the county, just as follows our routine maintenance activities. Staff are beginning to gravel road resurfacing. That'll be with Max Johnson Trucking, who is our gravel hauling contractor for the year. So that work will be taking place out on our gravel roads. Staff has continued to work on hauling out the southern third of the county. Seal coating work has been completed. They'll be fog sealing some of those roads, which is that black lift over the top, and what that does is helps lock in that aggregate and also provides a more distinct visibility for the new striping that goes down. And we'll also be replacing the centerline culvert on County Road 133 this month. The Kasaw six culvert that we talked about last month is completed. Staff are allowing a little time for that to settle. They'll be patching that at the end of August if anybody asks. That's the anticipated schedule. And briefly, rapid and dam update. We've had several meetings with BAR. We're actually going out to the dam tomorrow to look at the dam, go up the river basin on either UTVs or a John boat and give them an actual site visit. So with that being said, they've been making progress. For the removal study, they've been working on sediment discharge investigation, environmental analysis, floodplain and channel calculations and design, sediment removal calculations. Right now, they're anticipating that if we were to have to reshape the channel, as we've discussed, and go nearly back to the confluence with the 1-1 with the volume of fill that would have to be, would be about 740,000 cubic yards.
Wow.
Which actually, compared to the last study, is considerably less. We were in the millions.
Yeah.
So it's still a tremendous amount of soil and sediment. And some of that could probably, I would just say spitballing a 50/50 split and move on site versus haul it off site thereabouts. So we would try to not haul it all off. The draft report, the body of it is filling out nicely, and they're also working on additional DNR, Army Corps, MPCA coordination. The repair study's also moving along nicely. They've completed the hydraulics to determine the spillway flow velocities, which is, you know, as it comes over the OG of the dam and hits the apron, what's the true velocities? And then looking at energy dissipation models, can we put in a system to dissipate energy? They've investigated the scope of the gate repairs completed by others and what's been proposed and the investigations that have been done on the gates, determining what repairs are truly needed, and advancing the report text and then beginning cost estimation. So coming along again, probably October, when we could bring those reports forward to the county for a court session.
Is the water down far enough that they can do some repair on that at this time? I mean, since we're having this drought, I mean, and that we've had problems with repairing that for over the years because of the high water.
Right.
Consistently, over the last five years, we've had high water. This year, we don't. Is there a...
This would be the timing to do it? Yes. As far as weather conditions go, this would be ideal. The issue is that because there's such a big question mark.
What we're going to do?
Exactly. Nothing's happening with respect to repairs. Everybody's pretty apprehensive to invest in any sources. I have also had conversations with Alpine Pacific, who was interested in evaluating a lease option if we do move or the repairs. So we're trying to advance that portion of it too and get a written proposal for them to, for the board to kind of consider in parallel with the reports.
Lot of busy stuff.
Yes.
We'll get some of them roads done over in District Five so we can get around. The gravel roads are taking a beating over there. I got a couple more calls last week, but I just tell them, I just tell them we're doing the best we can. And the dry weather doesn't help neither.
Right.
You know, it's just, it's very hard on those roads, so.
So how many roads are gravel? How many miles? I can't remember.
Yeah, it's exactly two. I want to say...
350?
Yeah, I was going to say, the neighborhood of 350 miles are gravel. About 400 are paved, centerline, where else?
Thanks.
Any other questions for Ryan before we let him?
I would just add, we're doing the southern third for mowing as far as spraying and stuff. I'm still hearing a lot on wild parsnip and concern about that and the road ditches and getting into the conservation areas and farm fields and things like that. Do we have a wild parsnip plant? I see the drainage blog mentioned that a little bit, kind of tying the two together, but...
So, yes, so we are responsible for invasive species, toxic invasive plant management. And so we do spray, we do send notices out to townships when they have those noxious weeds. So Mike Samson in our department is our weed inspector. So with that being said, if there are locations that maybe we aren't aware of, if you wouldn't mind kicking us an email, I can certainly get Mike to go take a look at those and get notice out to the right people if it's not on County Road right of way. Yeah, if they could be emailed or, you know, the top of the roads off the top of your head, I can jot them down too, but I'm not...
I just noticed on the drainage blog that came out this week, the county sent out, they really recommended spraying them versus the, you know, the safety is the factor if for mowing and stuff like that, not be mowing, to be doing more spraying is what they recommended. So I'll get that to you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to take care of it.
All right. Thank you, Ryan.
All right, thank you.
People, I know we got this thing on Kasaw 12.
Yes, I'm sorry, I mentioned that.
Okay. I was just curious, I know we're going to do a flyover of the county. How does that fit into this? And Mike's here so I can ask both of you.
Yeah, I do, this is for the reconstruction project of County State Highway 12.
Yep, but you're going to go out and do surveys.
We're going to have the meeting at the airport.
Okay.
Yeah, and the surveys we do are going to be topographical surveys for the construction project, which is going out and tying in foam pedestals, septic mounds, wells, trees.
I just didn't know how the flyover...
Really not.
Not? Okay, that's my question.
Yep. All right, so yes, thank you for pointing that out. Public open house meeting also received a notice is the 24, I think, 4:06 PM at the airport. We're going to have it since it's right on that neck of the woods.
And that's for next year, right? The airport road?
Yep, and the city is planning the airshow. They have a bid in to try to get the Blue Angels back.
The 23rd, 23.
2023, yeah.
They're real nervous, the airport condition. They want to make sure it's done next year, so they don't have any problem.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right, we'll move on to our next item, Property Environmental Services. Michael.
Good morning.
Good morning, Michael.
Good morning.
For the record, Michael Stolberger, Director of Property and Environmental Resources. Hope you're all doing well today.
Yeah.
I have three separate items for you coming from different divisions in our department. And so I will just dive into the first one if that's okay.
Yep.
First one is a request for us to be able to submit an application for a Board of Water and Soil Resources grant. They have opened up a fair amount of funding as part of the state's two-year budget deal, and we wanted to be able to apply for some of that specifically related to water quality and well sealing. This would be in addition to our county's locally funded program that we've been doing now, which was shared with me, Tim Grant shared with me. We've been doing that for almost 30 years now.
Wow.
Isn't that crazy? 1,300 wells we worked on locally, almost $400,000 invested in that. And so this would be additional funding for us to do that. It would be a local match for the property owners. With the ability, what's nice about this one is that if we do have some very strategic or critical wells to seal, we can use full funding from the state for it instead of it being a property owner match, which really helps make an early hillary and whatnot where we have some very critical wells that property owners may not be able to seal with their own funding. So what we would like to do is submit a request for funding. It'll be a competitive bid, so we're not sure if we would get it, but we would be requesting anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000. That would be a two-year grant program. We would request an amount that we would actually be able to distribute. Of course, don't want to collect more than our staff can actually work with, but every indication, all of our local funding gets used up every year. The board authorizes about $9,000 annually, and we have folks waiting year after year for that. So indications tell us that the money would be well spent in our community to seal some of those wells. And so just as part of our grant policy, we wanted the board approval in order to dedicate our staff resources to that activity.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Got a first and a second for the well sealing application. Any questions or comments?
I do have a question. In talking to another county, they require three bids, and what, do we do that? I'm hoping we don't.
Yeah, for our, for our well, we actually don't have a lot of well contractors remaining. Tim is sure that would be on numerous occasions that one of our biggest holdups is the fact that contractors just are too busy right now to seal wells. So he's got his set of folks that he works with on a regular basis. He knows what the market is for that sort of activity. And so we just bid out through that directly with the individual that can do it.
I think that's good because the county I was talking to, they make, people get three bids, they take the low bid, and sometimes those aren't good contractors. So I'm pleased to hear that we're not doing that.
Exactly, yeah. Yep, when we can get a property owner engaged in that and we can get a contractor who's willing to go out there, we like to move forward on that pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, got a motion, a second for the 21 well sealing application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Item number two then would be approval of a contract for the aerial imagery. We talked about that just a little bit earlier. This would actually be a contract through the MCCC, which is a consortium where we purchase quite a bit of county technology. That allows us to leverage the statewide contract on it and get some savings there. What we're looking at here is an update to our aerial imagery. As you're familiar, Blue Earth County flies the county and we do two different types of photography or imagery. One is the obliques, which would give us that low angle side view of properties. Then we also do orthogonal or the overhead flight. We would be doing this in partnership with the city of Mankato and Maple. They actually fly at a higher resolution most of, all of Mankato and most of that northeastern part of the county as part of that development region. So this would be the remainder of the county. Its flight resolution quality would be the same as what we've had in the past. So we would be continuing to use that same technology at that same resolution. This price for the 2022 flight, which is a three-year price, we paid over, we divided it up into three annual payments, would be $97,980. The way that this company, Pictometry, also known as Eagle View, the way that they package that is they also give us that same rate or they'll lock in a rate for the second flight in 2025. However, MCCC's contract allows us to renegotiate that or opt out of that at a later date. So we can lock in this year's at 97.8 and then they would also honor that rate for the next flight in 2025. This is in the capital budget for the IT department, so it is accounted for in that budget, like I said, for the three-year period. So entertain or I'd appreciate approval to sign that contract and then of course answer any questions you might have about that.
Thank you, Michael.
We'll approve.
Also moved on.
Second, Mark, we got a first or a second, Mark?
Oh, I didn't hear say that. Second.
All right, we got a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
It's a great program. Sitting on planning and zoning, we see these maps and use these maps all the time. The technology is just amazing and it just makes it so much nicer to present stuff.
Absolutely, yes. And it's become quite a saver for us with our COVID response as well. It allowed the appraisers to do some review in advance of the homes so that they could limit their time out in the field with the property owners. So it's a great resource. And if we didn't approve it, our public would definitely be calling us, wondering what was happening with the photos. That's one of our most used features on our website for sure.
It's also a huge benefit for law enforcement.
Absolutely, yeah. We work very closely with dispatch to make sure that it's presented in a way for them to be able to go around the home as they're sending out our deputies and other law enforcement. So we work really well with them. And to maybe answer your question, Commissioner Landkammer, it is different than a survey or whatnot, but it does provide that foundation for so many of our departments. I mean, I know Highway looks at it just to orientate the property owners to sites. Drainage uses it all the time. Sheriff's Office, all of our departments do touch that technology. Human Services does it on some of their property lookups that they're doing for financial assistance and whatnot. So great resource.
Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, we got a motion, a second for the aerial photography contract. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the last of three items then is going to be our most detailed. This is something that we have visited at previous work sessions and I believe also even at county boards. So I will keep it higher level, but of course can go to any level of detail that you'd like us to do. But what I'm bringing forward with this last item for you is the recycling services agreements. That's how we're referring to it generally. As you're well aware, Blue Earth County has provided for quite some time, no-cost recycling services for all residents in Blue Earth County and all businesses for the recycling materials they produce in Blue Earth County. For the last several years, this was provided through an agreement with Waste Management of Minnesota. And they were an all-in-one sort of service for us. Collection, location, transfer to a processing center and all responsibility for the processing of those recyclable materials. That was at a flat rate of about $16,000 monthly or just under $200,000 for the year. That contract expired end of June of this last year. We've been operating on a month-to-month basis as we've worked through the final negotiations on the current agreement that I'm presenting to you. Earlier in this year, late last year, Waste Management informed us that they were not going to be able to honor that contract any longer due to some pretty significant changes in the recycling markets. We've talked about that, how the recycling market, the commodity market has seen quite a bit of variability and fluctuation with the pricing of those materials due to some worldwide impacts and effects. And so Waste Management was saying that they could not absorb all of the risk that they were seeing under the all-in-one contract unless they saw a very significant increase. I think I shared with you at the time, it was over doubling of that annual rate is what they expected in order to continue under that arrangement. That wasn't acceptable to us. And so we continued to negotiate with them to get a better understanding of what their concerns were. And so as we were able to kind of boil that down, it really came down to the risk of the market. And so the county, from our department's perspective, was willing to take on some of that risk. And actually, we're gonna end up taking on all of the risk under the arrangement we're presenting to you for a couple of reasons. Keeps the price more effective or cost-effective for us. It does allow us to get a better handle on what's going on with our recycling operations and programs so that we can plan on ways to improve that as we update our solid waste management plan and our recycling plan going on the next few years. Those are on our long-term planning project list. So what we have available for you is two different agreements. And the agreements are gonna cover not only the recycling acceptance of the facility out in La Hilaire, but also the transfer of those materials to a processing facility, a materials recovery facility, MRF, and then also the agreement with that MRF in order to turn those recyclable materials into commodity that will then have them sell back into the marketplace for us. So Agreement One is with Waste Management, and that is called the Recycling Agreement, as you've read through that. And it has an operations plan associated with it so that we can better control the actual operations at the La Hilaire facility. This will be a drop-off site, as I mentioned. It'll maintain the 24-hour services outside. It'll maintain the inside drop-off services for commercial businesses and residents of Blue Earth County. And it does make one minor modification for them, that they will not be staffing the residential drop-off on Saturday mornings. They'll have that drop-off only available for commercial operations on a holiday week. So that is a change. We did pick up some additional bins and whatnot for 24-hour drop-off, which is where we were seeing the use of that facility anyways. People like to drop it off outside. Not very often were they actually going inside the facility. So that is a change in there. There is a slight increase, or I shouldn't say it's a slight increase, it's a pretty decent-sized increase actually, but not nearly what they were originally proposing. You can see it's a three-year deal for us with two additional years if the county would choose to want to extend that contract. The rate's anywhere from 19,000 a month up to 22,000 if the extensions are authorized. So yes, an increase there, but we were able to modify that by assuming the risk in the commodities market, which is Agreement Number Two. Do you want me to pause there for questions or keep rolling?
Let's pause for questions. Is there any questions at this point? Again, we've already seen this at a work session, had a lot of discussion about it, but any questions at this point?
Because that's the side of the program that our residents will see. That's their drop-off facilities. It's how municipal or the cities of Blue Earth County would be bringing their recycling materials to us for that free drop-off and disposal. So now what we're moving into the behind, is the behind-the-scenes part of the program. And so this is an agreement with Demcon Materials Recovery of the Shakopee. And they will be providing all of our processing, recycling and marketing of the recyclable commodity after Waste Management has dropped it off at their facility for us. We're responsible for all of that material. And so we're passing on that responsibility to Demcon. The way that the Demcon agreement will be set up is it's also a three-year term with a two-year renewal if we'd like to, to keep those in hand-in-hand. And what it will, what we'll be able to do with them is pay a per-tonne processing and materials marketing fee. And then we receive a rebate on all of the materials that they are able to sell into the commodities market. So the way that that works right now is our current rate will be $76 a ton. And then every month, we get an accounting of the value of the commodities. The July commodities value is actually just under $100 right now. So Demcon would be paying us $20 a ton for the recycling materials we were bringing to their facility. So with the market the way it is right now, the risk is good. We would actually be making money. We have about 5,000 tons worth of commodities annually. So 5,000 times $20, you can do the math there. And it actually brings in some revenue there rather than us paying to recycle. The market could turn around on us, we just assume that risk. And so we work with Bob to kind of have that in a separately identified fund so that we can track this over the life of the contract to see whether or not it's a good deal or a bad deal for us. But it is something that we were looking at taking on to give us better information and also have the ability to provide some additional service here at the county. So we'll be doing that on an annual, on a monthly basis and watching what the market does with them, but they will handle all of that work. So we're still not anymore involved in the day-to-day operations. We just have a better handle on the information and we have the risk there or the potential reward as the market's showing us right now. So that's Agreement Number Two. I can take questions on that or I can bring them all together there for you for our requested action, if that makes sense, Mr. Chair.
Any questions on either item again at this point?
Just to clarify for me, so we're actually, we'll just have different people doing different sections of it. We're not going to have our staff doing anything different than they are right now.
Yeah, exactly right. The only change for our staff is that they will now be getting monthly information. That'll say, well, this is the tonnage, this is the type of material. And that information's going to be very helpful for us, as I said, as we try to figure out what our recycling program of the future needs to look like. Because with the commodity market changes, we just have behavioral changes out there and what folks are doing in terms of recycling, what they want to do in terms of recycling. And so this will give us much better information. As we've worked through this process, seeing those monthly reports that we can get related to our actual recyclable materials is amazing. The amount of residuals or garbage that people put in the recycling, we'll get that information now. And in the past, we were blind to it because Waste Management was doing all of that and taking all of that responsibility.
Thank you.
That's a good thing.
All right, so at this time, we will start with the approval of the following agreements for the Recycling Agreement, the operations part of it with Waste Management. And we will do the Recycling Service Agreement with Demcon Materials at the same time. So I have a motion for those two contracts. Got a first or a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And I will move on to the authorization to let the city administrator and the Environmental Resources Department Director execute and administer these contracts.
And to provide a little bit more context for you on that, because the recycling market changes on a monthly basis, we might find it beneficial to not bring our materials to Demcon for that month. And we're not under an obligation to bring them tonnage. It's just whatever tonnage we bring them, they're gonna charge us 76 bucks and give us a rebate. So what this gives us is a little bit of flexibility if the market would take a big turn and we want to go to another facility in the metro. That would allow Bob or myself to be able to modify the agreement and tell Waste Management, which is under the contract right now, we can say drive it to a different facility and we'll use that facility for one month. It also will give us coverage. Demcon, well knock on wood for them, has been very fortunate to not have any downtime related to like fires, which are a big deal at MRFs and whatnot, where we might need to be able to respond pretty quickly to saying we can't stack up our material, it needs to go somewhere. So this gives us a little bit of flexibility. It's something that we did with our ponderosa contracts with cell construction, just needing to be able to change to that on a moment's notice. This gives us some authority over...
We got ten fifteen, we'll get our meeting going again here. Our next item is to hear from Pat, the county attorney. Morning, Pat.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, if you have any specific questions, let me know. Just to give you some brief information, we're still working on the backlog with the courts, planning on in a couple of weeks having a meeting with the criminal justice partners and dealing with that moving forward. There are some initial plans in place. We do have some fairly good projects, which I think quite a few of you are aware of. They've been pretty time-consuming with some enforcement actions and condemnation going forward and whatnot. So, but other than that, I will just entertain any questions which you may have.
Any questions or comments for Pat? The court systems is getting back on track, Pat?
For the, for the most part, they're still, they're having a few more in-person hearings and that's, some of it is up to the individual judges. But the, the backlog, the way things stand now, if we continue at this rate in our county, our district is in very good shape compared to many other districts and counties within the state because we've been pushing through this entire time, many of these cases. And if we can, if we can, on average, dispose of twenty cases a month more than what we normally do, which isn't a large number, then we should be caught up by June of 2023 is what they're estimating. So, and I think that with the rate that we're going and what we're doing, and I just had a conversation with one of the judges last week, because right now from the, the major case backlog is a little over two hundred, and those are the most time-consuming cases. So each judge has about fifty or so. With the pandemic and other lack of resources, for example, our drug court, the numbers are down. And my suggestion was to the judge, then every judge should pull out of that two hundred cases, all the controlled substance crimes, and set them all on for one day. And, you know, because people, until people are at the courtroom door, they don't have any incentive to take care of these cases and dispose of these cases. But if they want the numbers to increase in drug court, that was, you've got to have them an incentive to do so. So, but the two hundred cases is, is not, you know, there's one district that is over fourteen thousand cases behind. And it's just, you know, I've talked about some of the other areas, other counties that they, their major caseload, they're six, eight, a thousand cases behind. So, and the vast majority of what goes on in the fifth judicial district is right here in Mankato, and then you throw in Nicola County and Brown County, and you're, you're taking about forty-five to fifty percent of the cases district-wide. So.
This probably isn't part of your report, but I just decided to ask a question. I saw that we're going to get another judge updated here.
Yes.
And is there a timeframe on that?
The, yeah, the application process has already started. They're hoping to have somebody up and going sooner rather than later, for sure, by the end of the year.
I was just curious, yeah.
Right. And that's based upon the, you know, there's been enough judges in this district for quite some time, and it's been going on for years that they've had more of a, more than a five judge need. That's why we've had visiting judges and senior judges filling in. But there were enough judges in the district, but not always, you can't get judges to say, well, I'll come help out for a while instead of stay here in whatever county. So.
I think it's a good thing. I was just curious.
Yeah.
You know, it's always a big deal. At least I remember it being a big deal if you get another judge. So.
Are you seeing a surge of violent crimes or?
Our numbers are reflective of, in part of what's going on nationally, that some of the more petty crimes are down, but our more serious crimes are up. And I know the, the drug task force is, you know, investigating two, if not three more of the overdose death cases, which are time-consuming for our office as well. But no, we are seeing that surge in, in the more violent crimes as well.
And when it comes to traffic, are you seeing the increase of the high speeds?
We've seen that plenty locally as well. In some of our misdemeanor crimes, the traffic, the traffic seems to be up, and especially the DWIs. We had four and five and one weekend, a couple of weekends ago, and we're still in the hundred deadliest days of summer. But, you know, and then there's another person in detox from a, from a DWI from last night. So, I mean, the, the numbers just keep increasing, increasing in that area. So, but those, those traffic offenses and some of the misdemeanor traffic offenses have increased. But some of the other, I'm waiting to see how things turn out, you know, because we didn't hardly have anybody on campus at MSU. I'm not saying that, but when you add fourteen full, fourteen thousand full-time students into the mix, that's just, you know, Human Services will see the numbers, we'll see the numbers. Other areas will see the numbers, and it'll just be interesting once campus gets going again this year to see how things progress.
I noticed there was, in the paper this morning, there was a, a DWI happened after an arrest of like a point four-six.
Yep.
That's an amazing high. I don't, I don't believe in my career I ever had one that high. I had some high, but not that high. And that's.
My personal was a five-two that I dealt with years ago. And so, but yes, that's extremely high.
That's extreme, extreme.
I drove to Marcellman's over last week, and everybody passed me. Everybody. The whole way up.
We've got to get you a better car.
I, I was just shocked because.
It's her little Vida convertible.
No, I actually have Jack's car.
Oh, Jack?
But the speeds, I mean, were just amazing to me.
Right. Any highway travel.
And it's not like I'm a slow driver.
You were going the speed limit, and they were still doing that.
I was going a little over the speed limit this time.
Well, you can go, you know, you got to, you do the ten mile.
That's not only locally or statewide, that's across the country. This is happening. And they, a lot of them come back to the 2020, the COVID, you know, people being.
Cooped up.
Cooped up, and they want to get out. And I don't quite understand that logic, but I guess it's there.
I, I was just astounded.
Yeah.
Other questions for Pat? Thank you, Pat, for that report. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move down to some administrative services.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, first item is the county board minutes for July twenty-seventh.
The minutes?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries for the minutes. Bills?
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the bills. Any questions or comments that haven't been fielded already? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries for the bills.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number ten in your packet is the Human Resources Department agenda. We just have informational items for the board today. We did fill a part-time library clerk position. We also administratively had some change to a resignation date of a human service supervisor, and subsequently have initiated recruitment to fill that human service supervisor position. We had a completion of employment for a clerical specialist in the public works area, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. Then we've had a couple of resignations within the jail for a couple of correctional officers, one part-time and one full-time position. So we've initiated recruitment to refill those positions. And then we had a, a human service supervisor who has resigned, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position as well. Be happy to answer any questions the board might have on the Human Resources agenda.
Any questions for Bob? Okay, thanks, Bob.
All right, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number eleven. Your packet is an exempt gambling license permit application. This is from the Minnesota High School Cycling League. They have an event at the end of October scheduled out at Mount Cato.
I'll move the.
Second.
Permit.
Got a motion and a second for the exempt gambling permit. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries for the gambling permit. Any other business, Bob, or committee reports?
That's all I have for you today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. At this time, we will start on our commissioner reports on committees. Kevin, I think I'll start with you today.
Okay, I participated with other commissioners. I'll be mentioned work session, the board lunch. Attended the J D fifteen final hearing on July twenty-seventh, as well as a short-term rental ordinance open house, J D nine hearing. We participated in S W C D meeting on August fifth, and with Vance attended the Blue Earth County Farm Bureau annual meeting. I also attended the Blue Earth County Night at the Moon Dogs, as well as a C D eighty-nine landowner meeting. I met with other staff and others concerning, Ryan's already mentioned, the Vernon Center Street project on August second, and continued discussions on the Lincoln Township Baptist Church with the township officers from Lincoln Townships. Upcoming events, again, just invite and remind everybody, there was a wrong date on social media. The Blue Earth, Lassure County Farm Bureau breakfast on the farm will be in Madison Lake again this year on August twenty-first. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Mark?
Okay, it follows a bunch of the same as Kevin's, the, the work session on the twenty-seventh, and then just participate with the J D fifteen final hearing, and then the, as we all think of, attended the short-term rental ordinance open house that night. On August fourth, we did have the department head meetings. And somehow I did miss that Farm Bureau thing. And then August fifth, did have RCF at the office, new office we have downtown. And that actually concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Cleane?
Mine's pretty short today, too. Things that haven't been mentioned yet. On the twenty-eighth, I had a Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership meeting. And, you know, with dollars that are going for rentals and stuff, lots, lots of information there. I had a, on the twenty-ninth, NACO call on the American Rescue Plan. On the second, the Diversity Council. The Diversity Council is going to take a little pause and try to figure out what the priorities are. Are they the right ones? Or what partnerships need to be built, that kind of stuff. So, we're not hiring anybody right now. The board's going to look at what are the priorities and what should they be doing. That night, I went to the city council meeting with Vance regarding the Tower at the airport, and then they did a presentation on Highway twenty-two, which was interesting. I guess I'd like to see that it's maybe part of a work session because it's very complex. And Mark, you know that better than anybody with Maple, but that might be, I think it's really complex.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And then on the fifth, I was part of a webinar on vaccines and local government. And I'd like to talk about that after, just quickly, well, I can do it now. I, I guess I'd like to know, and Pat, you're probably part of this, Bob's probably part of this, I'm not sure who's all part of it, if the county board can mandate vaccines for our staff. Because I think that's important. Okay, I'm done.
Did you want to answer on that question, or is that?
Well, I think they probably have to do a little research on it.
Probably.
I, I, I see that the service, the U.S. Army and stuff.
They're all doing it.
Are going to be doing it. So.
Yep. It's a safety health issue for me.
Yep. Vance?
All right. Well, a lot of the things have been mentioned, the work session on the twenty-seventh, the rental ordinance open house. On the thirtieth, I had a national membership call from NACO. And let's see. The city Mankato's work session about the airport. On Wednesday, the seventh, I had AMC coffee. We had a department head meeting. Attended the Bridge Plaza ribbon cutting with Mark. I had a library board meeting, and then of course, the Farm Bureau annual meeting, the Blue Earth County Fair. Myself and Commissioner Papp attended the energy and climate issues for S M C C. And talking about electric cars and, and energy issues across, you know, and there was a lot of legislators. Senator Nick Friends was there. Representative Sue Ackland, Luke Frederick, and Representative Munson was on Zoom. So there was a lot of good information there. And that brings me here. So mine is kind of short, too.
All right. Thank you, Vance. Yeah, most of the items that were, I was at were already mentioned, the work session, the final hearing for J D fifteen. Touched a little bit on short-term rental. I think most of us made it through there. Some of the staff made it through there. From what I understand, I don't think any from, anyone from the public came. We had one person show up from P and Z. But this show ain't over yet, I will guarantee you that. It's just unfortunate. We spend all that time and energy trying to get in front of this, and we don't get a good turnout, but we will. We will get the turnout. But we'll keep, we'll try to stay in front of it. We do have another informational meeting planned to talk about it and try to get some more people's input. So. Had my M R C I board meeting. Everything's kind of the same as last month. Having a hard time finding help. Got plenty of money to hire people, but nobody to come work for us at this point. But they're working diligently to get that done. Was over in Fairbault County for a ditch meeting, which Kevin popped in on that for a few minutes, but then I think we lost you. I don't know what happened there. But everything went fine with that. They had several questions about appointing an engineer for that. A very low, problematic ditch, from what I understand. We got all kinds of money in our half of the ditch. They don't have any money in their half to do the study, but they did approve it, and they'll be moving forward with that. Department head was already mentioned. My S E C B stuff, I've had several meetings between my legislative meeting and the chairman's meetings. The four oh-three B rewrite, which is coming to an end here. The fifteen chapters have been put together. The final write should be out this week. We'll be reviewing that. I'll run it over to staff and ask them to help me get some input for that because it's still fairly new to me. Planning's open, we had four items. Two were non-eventful, well, all four were non-eventful. Two of them were Blue Earth County ordinance adjustments, and the other two were constituents, but both good projects and easy to get done. And Kevin already reported that we were at S W C D, and they seem to be doing well there, and a lot of things going on with that organization. The meeting went really long. I had to dart out a little early, actually, but they had a lot of stuff to discuss, but a lot of good discussion. So that's my report. If there's no other business or nothing else for the good of the order, I'd entertain a motion to recess till.
Second.
Got a first and a second to recess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned.